Tonight's meeting, we will start off with the oath of office ceremony. First, I'd like to welcome Senator Katrina Shealy, Representative Chris Wooton, friends, family, guests, thank you all for being here tonight. The first oath of office ceremony will be conducted by Representative Chris Wooton or Councilmember Todd Carnes. Mr. Wooton, if you would come forward, Mr. Carnes, if you would join him down front, please.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of this state and of the United States
the Constitution of this state and of the United States
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
I will equally
I will equally
fairly
fairly
and impartially
and impartially
to the best of my ability and skill
to the best of my ability and skill
exercise the trust reposed in me
exercise the trust reposed in me
and I will use the best ende- and I will use my best endeavors
and I will use my best endeavors
to preserve peace
to preserve peace
and to carry into effect according to the law
and to carry into effect according to the law
the purposes for which I have been elected
the purposes for which I have been elected
so help me God.
so help me God. Thank you. Thank you, my friend.
Appreciate you being here. At this time, we'll have Councilmember Ron Williams will be sworn in by Senator Katrina Shealy. Senator, if you'd like to come forward, Mr. Williams.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of this office
to exercise the duties of this office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend
and preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
to the best of my ability and skill
to the best of my ability and skill
exercise the trust reposed in me
exercise the trust reposed in me
and I will use my best endeavors
and I will use my best endeavors
to preserve the peace
to preserve the peace
and carry into effect according to the law
and carry into effect according to the law
the purposes for which I have been elected
the purposes for which I have been elected
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, it is my honor to administer the oath of office to Mr. Steve Baker, if you'd join me down front.
I do solemnly swear I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve
and protect
and defend
and preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of this state and of the United States
the Constitution of this state and of the United States
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
as a council member of the municipality of Lexington, South Carolina
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
to the best of my ability and skill
to the best of my ability and skill
exercise the trust reposed in me
exercise the trust reposed in me
and I will use my best endeavors
and I will use my best endeavors
to preserve the peace
to preserve the peace
and carry into effect according to the law
and carry into effect according to the law
the purposes for which I have been elected
the purposes for which I have been elected
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Baker. Congratulations to all three of you. We are truly excited that all three of you are back on with us tonight. At this time, we will take a five-minute recess if anyone would like to leave. Now that the ceremony is over, you can do that. We'll be recessed for five minutes. Very good. Welcome back. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting this evening. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 6, 2021. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougal, the mayor of the town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Steve Baker for invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Father God, we just take this moment and we just come before you and, Lord God, we thank you for your blessings, we thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. Lord God, we thank you for everything you do for us and for Jesus. We ask that the Holy Spirit will fall over the town of Lexington and that our community will be full of the evidence of the fruits of the Spirit. Lord God, we need you and we love you and it's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, I'd like to invite the Boy Scout Troop 507, if y'all would come forward. Y'all can face us or you can face the audience, whichever way you want to do it. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen, Troop 507. Thank y'all very much for being with us. We appreciate y'all coming, being a part of this meeting tonight. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I will ask, are there any deletions on the agenda for tonight? Anything anybody would like to take off the agenda? Hearing none, very good. We'll move right into approval of minutes. A copy of the minutes from the council work session on October 18, 2021, and the regular council meeting on November 1, 2021 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council work session, October 18, council meeting, November 1? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Ms. Manus seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is a proclamation for the Lexington, South Carolina, as a Purple Heart Town. Mr. James Miller is with us. Mr. Miller, if you'd like to step forward, please, to the podium. We'd like to present you with a proclamation by Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for joining us again.
Yes, sir.
A proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, recognizing Lexington, South Carolina, as a Purple Heart Town. Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chartered by an act of Congress, is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, to promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never forget. And whereas the town of Lexington has a highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients, including yourselves, and whereas the town of Lexington appreciates and genuinely appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believes it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and the respect that they have earned. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council that the town of Lexington is hereby a Purple Heart Town and all citizens are encouraged to show their appreciation for the sacrifices that Purple Heart recipients have made defending our freedom. Dated the 6th day of December, 2021, signed by Steve McDougal, mayor. Again, I want to say genuinely, and I don't want to speak for all of us, I'm sure some of us will also speak, but we really do appreciate your sacrifices and all you've done.
Thank you very much. Mayor, can I say a few words?
Absolutely. The microphone is yours, Mr. Miller.
I enjoy being around young people. That is the future of our country here. That is the future of Lexington. The three scouts that have done the pledge of allegiance, could you just say it out in the distance? I'd like to give you the very best of your heart. Thank you for doing this, I'm glad to see that. Now, John Testtruth, who is also with me, we're supposed to have some others here, but they, we had some miscommunication between tomorrow with the Sheriff's Department doing a proclamation and today. Some thought it was tomorrow, so I'm sorry it was only two of us here, it was supposed to have been about five of us. Our goal as Purple Heart members is to keep the memory alive of what we do and what we've done for our nation. George Washington done badge of merit, as you said earlier, just a badge that give permission for any soldier who received that badge to bypass the formations, not have to salute the officers and things of their nature. It kind of went into archives. In 1932, one of my heroes, General Douglas MacArthur, reinstated the Purple Heart and changed it around from badge of merit. It is the oldest medal that the military gives out. It is one of the medals
that nobody wants.
Believe me, I didn't want it. John didn't want it, but we got it. We wear it proudly to represent our country. Lexington County, for your information, Mayor, was the first county in South Carolina to become a Purple Heart County. Since that has happened, we have had every county with the help of Nikki Governor Nikki Haley to have every county in South Carolina to become a Purple Heart County, which makes us a total Purple Heart State. The second congressional district, Congressman Wilson, is a Purple Heart congressional district. We have everything from towns, cities, companies, businesses that recognize the Military Order of Purple Heart because we would like to get the word out of what the Purple Heart represents. And as people like you, Mayor, when I got to talk to all the veterans as they prayed and offered this out to see what we could do, it does me good to be in Lexington County, not in the town here, but in Lexington County, to be able to get this proclamation tonight. And I deeply thank every council member. Now, as John give you a coin, a Purple Heart coin, each one of you, every time you see that coin, I would like for you to just think about the many lives, the many American soldiers, Marines, sailors, Coast Guard, Air Force, that sacrificed so much for our nation and so we could have a meeting like this. Without that taking place, we couldn't be here. We would be speaking some other language, most likely. So just remember that every time you see that coin, that is yours to keep and yours to cherish. It don't mean a whole lot sometimes, but on the other hand, it means a whole lot. I would also like to give an individual in here a coin myself, Purple Heart coin that John gave out, because she is the one who helped me on the
Proclamation.
proclamation and everything. So Becky, is it Becky?
I think Karen also helped you with that. We talked on the phone.
I'll give you one more.
They'll share.
When y'all share this one in your office, and never forget, some gave some and some gave all. And God bless the United States of America. Mayor, I salute you and all the citizens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more coming. Say what? You want to put them in the middle and they hold each other?
No.
You want, do I count on you? I'm standing there, goodbye.
Thank you. My father-in-law was a Purple Heart recipient. When I first went over to meet them, he showed me that. So we're very proud of it.
Thank you. Captain? Where were you wounded? In the mud.
Mr. Miller, you left your proclamation. We're going to chase you down.
This is for you.
I'm going to put it up in here, lady. Thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manus. This is a proclamation recognizing Lexington Jewelers, Ms. Barnett Scott. Councilmember Manus, Ms. Scott, if you'd like to come forward, we'd like to present you with a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, recognizing Lexington Jewelers. Whereas Lexington Jewelers is the oldest jewelry store in the town of Lexington and has been a fixture in the Lexington business community since 1963, and whereas generations of customers have trusted Lexington Jewelers for their jewelry needs, and whereas Barnett Scott and the folks at Lexington Jewelers have also served the community by assisting charitable causes with projects which has worked for the betterment of the Lexington community. And whereas their contributions have helped the Lexington business community and various charitable organizations to ensure that Lexington continues to be an outstanding place to live and do business, and whereas Lexington Jewelers is closing its doors after over 50 years of service to the citizens of the town of Lexington and to the business community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Lexington Jewelers is hereby recognized and congratulated upon its successful tenure as one of the most prominent local merchants in the town of Lexington and is afforded many thanks for continuous efforts to help make Lexington a better place to live and do business, thereby benefiting all citizens. Dated the 6th day of December, 2021, Steve McDougal, mayor.
Thank you all very much. And I really appreciate it. It's been my pleasure to serve and I've been very blessed to have so many in the community support me because I couldn't have been through it without them all. So thank you again. God bless you all and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Ms. Scott. All right, Boy Scouts, y'all know where to go. On Main Street, get your little girlfriend a necklace or a ring or a bracelet.
Their mom, they said their mom.
Or your mom. That's very good. Good thinking about your mom. Christmas is coming.
Y'all tell your daddies to go like two of us.
Your dad, your mom, your bone, your sister.
God bless you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Ms. Scott.
You're just welcome.
Thank you, dear. You take care.
I might take it with me when I go.
Yes.
I mean, when I really go, I'm going to see the Lord.
I hope you enjoy dinner tonight. Thank you.
I gotta go feed the dogs. God bless you all.
God bless you. Our final presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Ron Williams. This is a proclamation for Arbor Day in the town of Lexington. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the town of Lexington that Friday, December 10, 2021, is hereby proclaimed Arbor Day in the town of Lexington, South Carolina. And that all citizens are urged to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and by planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaimed the 6th day of December, 2021, Steve McDougal, mayor.
Mr. Walker is with us tonight. Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll be planting a tree Friday morning at 10 o'clock out at Gibson Pond, fairly close to the dam area in that area. We'll be easily seen. We'll be the group with the shovels. We look forward to everyone joining us out there for this momentous thing that we do every year, planting a tree.
Very good. I think this is your
25th.
25th consecutive year. I was going to say 24th, but 25th.
For the Tree City USA Award, I think we're working on 30.
30, very good. Congratulations.
It's longer than before me.
Yeah. Very good, Dan. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
This is the vision plan update for December 6, 2021. Virginia Hilton Park, the renovation and expansion, the plans are moving forward for Virginia Hilton Park. A committee meeting was recently held and they gave recommendations of the most used types of equipment for the all-inclusive playground. We are continuing to work on the construction documents in preparation for bidding of the project early next year. Old Mill Pond Trail, the work is expected to start soon on the one-mile walking trail that will be around Old Mill Pond. We are continuing to work on easement acquisition. This is being coordinated with the reconstruction of the Old Mill Dam, which is ongoing. Gibson Pond Park, the town has decorated the park for Christmas, so make sure you go by and see the new decorations for the first time in Gibson Pond Park. For a full list of all of our vision plan projects that are ongoing, please join us at our website at lexsc.com. At this time, we'll have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The North Lake Drive widening and Harmon Street extension project is quickly coming to an end. Harmon Street traffic has now been directed to the new traffic signal on North Lake Drive and Drew Street will be connected in the next two weeks. Please be aware of change in traffic patterns as the final paving and road relocation work is completed. Also, the adaptive signalization work continues along 378 and Sunset Boulevard and Augusta Road and West Main Street. The next traffic committee meeting has been scheduled for January the 12th at 8:00 here at Town Hall. And if you have any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, pothole that needs to be repaired, please call 803-358-7273.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearings tonight is final reading of an ordinance to purchase property for the U.S. 378 Sunset Split Improvement Project. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. We'll move straight into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. This is final reading of an ordinance to purchase property for the U.S. 378 Sunset Split Improvement Project. Councilmember Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As part of the U.S. 378 Sunset Split, the town will need to purchase 1.26 acre parcel of property adjacent to town limits. An appraisal has been taken and staff is asking for permission to negotiate the sale. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, details of a negotiated contract and identification of the property will take place once the deed is signed. The seller would like to close on or before December 31st. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manus makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is final reading of an ordinance, rezoning Lexington County tax map, number 4323-04-003 and 004, located in the 100 block of Old Chapin Road and along Snell Grove Road. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jonathan and Ted Stambleidis submitted a request to rezone 5.7 acres from general commercial and limited commercial to general commercial with a phone ring. Just kidding. To general commercial with a planned unit development overlay. Purpose of the request is to support the development of a 31-unit town home project with two mixed-use units on 2.07 acres of the site. Projects, properties adjacent to this project are zoned general commercial and limited commercial. The Planning Commission recommended approving this request during their August meeting. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval of this project.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance approving a planned unit development consisting of 31-unit mixed-use town home project. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Revival Development LLC is requesting site plan approval of a planned unit development consisting of 29 townhomes and two mixed-use units to be constructed on 2.07 acres behind the Flight Deck Shopping Center on Snell Grove Road. HUD request also includes the Flight Deck Commercial Center property. Primary access to development will occur from Old Chapin Road through an easement with the commercial center. There will also be a gated access to the development from Snell Grove Road for use by residents and service vehicles. The The development's internal streets will be privately owned and privately maintained. Project is requesting approval as a planned unit development due to the unique nature of the proposal and to allow variances in the traditional zoning requirements. The planning commission reviewed this project and recommended approval of this request during their August meeting. Based on the planning commission's recommendations and meetings they had with the developer, I will make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Very good. There is a motion on the floor. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing a 42-acre parcel located on the South Lake Drive and Innovation Place. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lexington Charter LLC is purchasing 42.04 acres on the corner of South Lake Drive and Innovation Place and has petitioned to annex the property. 1,900 student charter school is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, general commercial, and high-density residential. South Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road. Innovation Place is classified as a local road, and Bruner Road is classified also as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the property. They also recommended re they also recommended classifying South Lake Drive as an arterial road, Bruner Road as a local road, and reclassifying Innovation Place as a collector road. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyle seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
I'm actually a part of a statewide board related to this project, so I will recuse myself.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Hanson, could you answer a question for me? I know there was some discussion in the meetings about the road improvements, and there was some time scheduled. What was the what did the consensus of the planning commission?
There was an agreement to do the requested road improvements within two years of the approval date, which was in September. So two years from September there, we need to have the real alignment of Bruner Road and Glassmaster complete.
Will they be allowed to finish the final phase before?
I don't think their intention is to finish to do the final phase that quickly. And originally, the proposal was for the school to be open in August, and I have some information today that that might have been delayed as well. Even less time the school would be open without that improvement done.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have anything?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Manus.
Mr. Hanson, are they chartered through the Public Charter School or the Erskine Charter School?
I believe it's an Erskine school.
Okay. And we have excellent schools in Lexington County, but this is great to have a choice with this charter school. So thank you. I'm glad they're coming.
I don't want to turn around again.
Say thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Just messing with you.
New guys got jokes. Anyone else? We have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Mr. Lyle. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 4496-01-007, located at 5150 Sunset Boulevard. Mr. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Storage Units Lexington LLC is purchasing five acres located at 5150 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A climate-controlled storage facility is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. Planning commission reviews this reviewed this annexation during their November meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Mayor, I would make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. This is first reading updating the land development and zoning ordinances. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council and the planning commission met to discuss the proposed land development and zoning ordinances on November the 30th, 2021. At the conclusion of the meeting, council agreed to move forward with a first reading of these ordinances on December the 6th, 2021. A public hearing and final reading are expected to be held at the March 7th, 2022 council meeting. The most recent updates to these ordinances are attached. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Very good. Mayor Protam makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to thank Mr. Hanson and the staff that have worked on this. This document is quite large. I'm not sure how many pages. Did we ever figure how many pages this ends up being, John?
I didn't count.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pile. And I know the planning commission worked hard on this several several times, had several meetings, and I know that other staff members here at Town Hall have worked on this for us. Appreciate them doing something outside their job.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
I would just echo that very briefly, that I know a lot of people put a lot of time into it, and so we do appreciate their efforts, and it was all done with a mind and an eye towards responsible growth.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Just want to point out, this is one of the ways, you know, we've got a lot of citizens and a lot of folks who have expressed concern about what feels like uncontrolled growth and uncontrolled development, and this is one of the mechanisms where we take back control of some of that and so and have more of a say. And so I'm proud to be a part of this, and I'm all about growing in a more more controlled fashion moving forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear announcements for this evening from Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start off and give a shout out to everybody that was involved in the weekend events that that we had here, not only to our staff, Walker Brewer, and everybody that works there, and everybody that does media and everything else. We had the best weekend ever, and so I want to give a shout out to the citizens of Lexington. When we hit that Christmas parade on Sunday afternoon, there were more people there than we've ever seen in our lives, well over 100 floats, and there's a reason we're not the city of Lexington, we're the town of Lexington, because there's some events like this where we have some small-town charm and some great community that we maintain, and this year was the best ever. So thanks for everybody who contributed. It really builds community. It really means a lot. Outside of that, I will say Arbor Arbor Day will be observed, as we heard earlier, in the town of Lexington with a tree planting at Gibson Pond Park, newly refurbished, of which many people have been very complimentary on December 10th at 10:00 a.m. Town Hall will be closed on December 23rd and 24th for the Christmas holidays and December 31st for the New Year holiday. The next meeting of Town Council will be Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Get used to writing that at 6:30 p.m. Traffic Committee will meet on Wednesday, January 12th at 8:00 a.m. in the third-floor conference room, and the planning commission will meet Wednesday, January 19th at 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Say happy birthday to the puppy youngest among us up here, Mr. Steve Baker, the one who keeps us young, and and just finally say, as we go into the end of the year, Lexington is a great, great place. Thanks to everybody who contributes to making it a great place, and it's going to be better in 2022. Everybody have a great Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? I'm sorry?
I'm waiting on council members.
Anyone else?
I'll take a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Baker.
Just want to say that it's been an absolute pleasure to serve my first term for the town of Lexington. I am super excited to have won reelection with Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Carnes. I'm very excited about a number of things that we've got coming down the pike and just the general direction the town of Lexington is going, and so I'm thankful for the community, thankful for all of y'all up here that are in service to the town, and I'm looking forward to the future very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker. Anyone else? If y'all remember, several years ago, we had a young man that lived in town. His name was Briggs Chamber. We gave him a proclamation. He would have been 15 today, and I just want you to remember the last line of his proclamation, and it read like this. Keep his memory alive by cherishing others and living each day to the fullest promise. I heard from his father today, and Mayor Protam just reminded me of that, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. He was a special young man. Very good. Anyone else have anything? Are there any questions from the news media? No questions. Any questions from the public? Jonathan, you have anything? Come on forward, please, to the microphone.
So excited to get up here. Sorry to jump out of line, Mayor. Councilmembers, happy holidays, y'all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you. My name's Jonathan Stambleidis. I'm with Revival Developments, and I wanted to express our appreciation for your guidance and all the groundwork you laid out in Lexington's vision plan. Forward-thinking of the town's vision plan paves a way for Lexington to create a new kind of living experience, one that sets the course for our future generations of Lexington live, work, and play. We couldn't be more excited about all the benefits that an urban village like Sandpiper will bring to its residents and its surrounding neighbors. We appreciate your support, and I've thoroughly enjoyed collaborating with the council, planning commission, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Edwards, and Mr. Poole to bring a new type of community in Lexington one step closer to fruition. We look forward to getting Sandpiper Village underway in early '22, and thank you for all your support. Merry Christmas to y'all. God bless.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Merry Christmas.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say regarding tonight's agenda? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, December 6th, 2021. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and a video will be available on the town's website at lex sc dot com. Without objection, we are adjourned.